Good afternoon, everyone. How are you doing? We're excited because it's the last week of the legislature. So it's an interesting time for you to be here. My name is Catherine Fife. I'm the Chair of the Public Accounts Committee, and we are here to begin consideration of the Waterfront Toronto Section 3.15, 2018 Annual Report of the Auditor General. Joining us this afternoon are representatives from Waterfront Toronto and the Ministry of Infrastructure. Thank you for being here today to answer the committee's questions. I would invite you to each introduce yourselves for answered before you begin speaking. You will have 20 minutes collectively for an opening presentation to the committee. We will then move into the question and answer portion of the meeting where we will rotate back and forth between the government and the official opposition caucuses in 20-minute intervals. So please begin, and please introduce yourself as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Diamond, and I am Chair of the Waterfront Corporation. With me on my left is Lisa Taylor, who is our CFO, and on my right is George Zagarek, our CEO. We also have with us today in the audience Meg Davis, who is a Chief Development Officer, as well as Christina Werner, who is the Vice President of Innovation Sustainability and Prosperity. So with those introductions, I'd like to thank you for having us to participate today, and just want to make some preliminary comments. And at the outset, I wanted to thank the Office of the Auditor General for its report, which we found quite helpful. As you may be aware, most recently, on October 31st, Waterfront Toronto announced a realignment on several critical issues with Sidewalk Labs' Keyside proposal, many of which directly address the recommendation in the auditor's report. And I plan to speak a little more about that project after you hear from our CEO. Having said that, before I do, it's important for this committee to know that Waterfront Toronto is about much more than Keyside. It's been 30 years since David Crombie, Toronto's former mayor, delivered his Royal Commission report on the future of Toronto's waterfront. And he wrote, "Toronto was born on the waterfront. The people of Toronto understand the unique historic opportunity that the waterfront gives this metropolitan city." So the corporation was formed in about 2001, and over the past 18 years, Waterfront Toronto has tackled the challenges of environmental contamination, fragmented land ownership, and competing political jurisdictions. And those are all issues that we faced when this corporation started its job, and a lot of the waterfront, particularly to the west of Yonge Street, had already been developed. Waterfront Toronto was then given a mandate to revitalize 800 hectares of former industrial lands on the shores of Lake Ontario into thriving neighborhoods that grow our economy and improve our quality of life. It has been used as a catalyst to create prosperity, explore new ways of urban living, and set best practices in the urban environment. At the beginning, each order of government committed $500 million for a total of $1.5 billion in seed capital plus government land sale revenues. Our business model is to take that seed capital and remediate and service lands to unlock them for development. Revenues from those land sales are then reinvested back into waterfront revitalization efforts. And I'm proud to say that the revitalization of Toronto's waterfront is one of the largest urban redevelopment projects in North America and one of the most significant waterfront revitalization ever undertaken in the world. Since Waterfront Toronto's inception, we have helped generate over $10 billion in new private sector investment, and we've created 26 hectares of new public spaces, including award-winning iconic parks such as Canada Sugar Beach and Corktown Common. We have also helped to create 14,000 full-time years of employment, 5,200 new residential units, 600 affordable housing units, which are either constructed or been planned for, with another 1,000 units in affordable housing units in design, and 1.5 million square feet of commercial office space. These revitalization efforts, coupled with private sector development occurring on the waterfront, have generated approximately $1.6 billion in government revenues back to the three orders of government that can be reinvested into other priorities. We're proud of this success, and we're also proud of how we've achieved it through innovative approaches and setting the bar higher for waterfront development. For over a decade, we've challenged our development partners to include more affordable housing and construct lead-standard environmentally sustainable buildings. And this has set a positive example for development throughout the rest of the city. And today, Waterfront Toronto also has a further ambitious slate of projects that once complete will make Toronto's waterfront truly world-class. The most significant job we have that is currently underway is to provide flood protection for the downtown core. This is the first step needed before revitalization work can begin, and the enormity of the challenge cannot be overstated. Significant steps already have been made. When this is done and completed, it will unlock an additional 240 hectares of land for new development, and that's about the size of Toronto's downtown core. As Waterfront Toronto has outlined in our five-year corporate plan, we are aiming to create a next-generation community at Keyside. We believe that this project in particular does have the potential to situate Toronto, Ontario, Canada as leaders in the innovation economy, as well as leaders in climate-positive development, and to be able to do so to ensure that all data governance will be handled in a democratically accountable manner. The discussion on Keyside has demonstrated that the people of Toronto are passionate, engaged, and determined to see the waterfront remain a thriving place for everyone to enjoy. While Keyside has recently been a focal point of public attention, we have many other exciting projects underway. We are working to expand and transform the Jack Layton Ferry Terminal. We're working with the city to develop a destination playground to add to the vibrant parks along the waterfront. To achieve a more active and connected waterfront, we are working with designers to complete a three-kilometer continuous pedestrian route from the Portland Slip in the west to the Parliament Slip in the east. Waterfront Toronto is also exploring the opportunity for a landmark institution or cultural site on the waterfront, much like the Sydney Opera House in Australia. As I said earlier, I'm proud of the work that Waterfront Toronto is doing, and I can say that I have a great confidence in its direction moving forward. I would now pass the floor over to George Zagarek, our CEO.
Thank you very much, Steve. I'm George Zagarek, the President and CEO of Waterfront Toronto. I'd like to start by thanking you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee for the opportunity to be here today. As some of the members may be aware, I've spent my entire 35-year career in public service prior to taking on the position of CEO at Waterfront Toronto. I actually started my career working for the Auditor General of Canada. I followed that with almost 33 years, serving in the Ontario Public Service, of which I spent 11 years as Deputy Minister in five different portfolios. During this period, I spent 11 years on the Deputy Minister Corporate Audit Committee and was selected last year to be one of only two deputies on the Ontario Internal Audit Committee. In addition, I've served for a short period of time as the Ontario Fairness Commissioner. So as you can see, I have spent my career protecting the public interest and ensuring fairness and value for money of public expenditures. I carry the same responsibility in my role as the CEO for Waterfront Toronto, and I'm pleased to share the progress Waterfront Toronto has made in addressing the recommendation of the Auditor General's report. I also know that my colleague here, Deputy Minister Chris Gianaccios from the Ontario Ministry of Infrastructure, is here as well to provide the ministry's perspective on its role in Waterfront Toronto. I want to thank Steve Diamond for his leadership since becoming the tri-government chair earlier this year. I also want to recognize and thank Will Fleisig, who's in the audience here, who is here today for his past contributions to the corporation. And thank you to the Office of the Auditor General for the considered recommendation in last year's report. The recommendations have guided operational improvements at the corporation so that we can provide value to our government partners and the people they represent. Since the Auditor General's report last year, Waterfront Toronto has implemented fully 71% of its recommendations. We expect to reach the 100% mark by the end of our fiscal year, March 2020. I want to take this opportunity to discuss three specific matters raised in the value-for-money audit. Firstly, the Auditor General rightly identified some of the structural barriers that Waterfront Toronto has faced in our mandate to revitalize waterfront. This includes land ownership, planning control, and overlapping responsibilities with other organizations. We've already made progress on these challenges. To reduce overlap and duplication, we've signed a memorandum of understanding with Ports Toronto to ensure open lines of communication and that due consideration is given to each other's core service competencies when we procure services. We are also moving forward with an MOU with the three orders of government. As committee members may know, a critical step to continuing to fulfill our mandate is the flood protection of the Portland's area. We broke ground just over a year ago, and we're on track to complete the project on time and on budget in 2024. We're proud of how far we've come, and we're carefully managing this very important project. In keeping with the Auditor General's recommendations, we have detailed construction estimates for every one of the 23 component projects of the Portland's project. To ensure we are effectively managing our projects and tracking against budgets and timelines, we've implemented a new enterprise resource planning system. For the past year, the Capital Program Management Office has managed project costs, including change orders. We also brought in an independent capital project monitor to assist the Finance Audit Committee in its oversight role. The monitor provides independent quarterly reports on project status, including budget, schedule, scope, and risk. We're providing regular project progress updates to government funders, including actual expense to budget information and timelines, and answering any questions that they may have. Progress against budgets is now reported on a monthly basis, and we are regularly visiting the project site to make sure construction invoices match the work that's being done. The summary table we provided, the committee members, will provide a more thorough understanding of the measures that we put in place. I also want to mention for this project, we have contracted the Mississauga's of the Credit to provide additional oversight on the archaeological excavation. The second matter I want to raise is Waterfront's ability to deliver projects on budget. As you'll see in our summary, we're also implementing systems to improve on that record. Our Chief Financial Officer, Lisa Taylor, is here with us today and can answer questions that the committee might have regarding our budgets. With respect to the Keyside project, the report considered several elements, including the procurement that led to the selection of Sidewalk Labs as the innovation and funding partner. We are confident that the process was fair, open, and competitive. That was certainly the opinion of Waterfront Toronto's Fairness Advisor, Justice Colter Osborne, who oversaw the procurement process and did a further review following the Auditor General's report and reaffirmed his opinion. The scope of Keyside was raised as an issue by the AG's report. I'm happy to report that the geographic scope of the project is back to the 12 acres of Keyside alone. The report further recommended that we work more closely with federal and provincial governments on the ideas being considered by Sidewalk that may fall outside of the existing policy frameworks. We couldn't agree more. All orders of government have recognized the importance of modern privacy and data governance legislation, and we continue to share our insights with our government partners. In closing, I want to say that since I've joined Waterfront Toronto, I've been very impressed by the dedication on the board and the staff. Both are committed to creating a waterfront for everyone to enjoy. This organization has incredible momentum, and I'm looking forward to the year ahead. I'd like to turn this back over to Steve Diamond, our Chair.
Thank you, George, and thank you for your leadership. It's been great to have you on board. Before we conclude, I did want to take this opportunity to walk you through Waterfront Toronto's journey since we did receive the Auditor General's report last December. Waterfront Toronto has had a transformative year. When I was first asked to chair the board of Waterfront Toronto at the beginning of the year, I can honestly say I wasn't sure that I wanted the job. But I did look at it carefully, and I decided that if I was going to take this job on, I wanted to move forward, knowing that I would have the support of all three levels of government that would allow me to take a strong position on behalf of Waterfront Toronto. And that happened to occur, which made me take the position. That also included the opportunity to speak with the Premier, and I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and thank the Premier for being personally available to me. His commitment to getting the waterfront revitalization right, the time he's taken, including discussions on the Keyside project, has been truly appreciated. The support of government made me realize that if we had the opportunity to do something great, that we should pursue it and be able to pursue something that would be great for the city and also we would be able to stand up for the public interest. So looking back, I'm satisfied as to where we are today, and I'm glad I was able to take on this role and give something back to our city. From Keyside to the Portland's revitalization, we've made significant progress on top of what's going on, but it wasn't easy to get here. Sidewalk Labs won the RFP to be Waterfront Toronto's innovation and funding partner in 2017. They were chosen by an independent selection committee, which did not include any politicians. As a member of the board, I can say that I believe that the process was fair and transparent. And as George mentioned, the process was overseen by the former Integrity Commissioner and Associate Superior Justice Colter Osborne and its separate law firm, Denton's LLP. When Waterfront Toronto released the Sidewalk Labs' master innovation and development proposal to the public this past June, as a result of everything that had been written, I wrote an open letter outlining the board's concerns with this initial vision. The letter that I wrote acknowledged that there were some exciting ideas that respond to the challenges we face today, particularly related to environmental sustainability and economic development. But the letter also clearly outlined areas of misalignment between Waterfront Toronto and Sidewalk Labs that would need to be resolved before proceeding to an evaluation of the proposal. We set a deadline of October 31st to see if we could come to ground on these key issues and land our proposal that aligned with the public interest. Fortunately, there was significant movement from Sidewalk Labs, and on October 31st, the board unanimously decided to move forward with a formal evaluation of the MIDP, which is the plan they've put forward, as amended by the resolution of the threshold issues. Having said all that, I will reiterate now what I said on October 31st. This is not a done deal. There is still a lot of work to be done before a final decision is made. The plan, known as the MIDP, as amended, is currently undergoing a formal evaluation by Waterfront Toronto staff, supported by external experts. We've continued to consult with the public. In the first quarter of 2020, there will also be another round of consultation to share and seek feedback on the status of the evaluation. A decision about whether to move forward will be made by March 31st by Waterfront Toronto's board. Keyside is a pivotal project for Toronto, Ontario, and Canada, and I know that my fellow board members and the staff at Waterfront Toronto are working diligently to get it right if it's to go forward and best serve the public interest. I want to conclude by thanking the Office of the Auditor General once again. Its report has helped us to renew our commitment to operational excellence and leading in best practices. And thank you to the committee for the opportunity to share our perspectives with you this afternoon. We're obviously here to answer any questions that you may have, so thank you. I should now turn the floor over, I think, to Chris Giancass, the Deputy Minister of the Ontario Ministry of Infrastructure.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Chris Gianaccios, and I'm the Deputy Minister of Infrastructure. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the Standing Committee on Public Accounts and provide an update on the work the ministry's been doing to implement the recommendations from the 2018 Auditor General's report. Joining me today is Adam Reddish, the Assistant Deputy Minister for Infrastructure Policy, Fatih Salim, the Ministry's Legal Director, and Wendy Wren, the Director of Infrastructure Policy and Planning. Briefly, the ministry agrees with the Auditor General's recommendations, and we are making progress in implementing those recommendations. I would like to highlight for you briefly some of the work that we've undertaken as a whole since the report came out. As you know, Waterfront Toronto is provided joint oversight by all three levels of government: the City of Toronto, the province, and the federal government. In response to concerns about overlapping mandates, the ministry is working with its federal and municipal government partners to clarify roles and responsibilities between relevant organizations involved in the revitalization of the Toronto waterfront. This will feed into the mandate review of Waterfront Toronto once the preliminary work is undertaken and there's agreement between all three levels of government. Government accountability and oversight is being undertaken through a trilateral committee comprised of senior representatives from the three levels of governance. The committee has been in inception since the beginning of setting up Waterfront Toronto. To strengthen and support this function, the three levels are developing a memorandum of understanding with Waterfront Toronto to establish principles, to guide decision-making, set expectations for monitoring and reporting, establish communications and issue management protocols, as well as a dispute resolution process. The MOU will build on the work already done by the committee and will essentially clarify, codify, and improve on existing practices. On the question of performance measures, the ministry couldn't agree more of the essential nature of these to ensure that we can assess Waterfront Toronto's performance. Waterfront Toronto has developed a set of performance measures linked to its legislative mandate. All three levels of government have provided input and endorsed the measures that are now included in Waterfront Toronto's 2019—
Mr. Gianaccios, I'm sorry, that's the end of the 20-minute introduction. I'm sure the rest of your presentation will come out through the questions. This week, we will officially begin with the official opposition for 20-minute question rotation. I just want to let the audience know that we have an overflow room. Room number two is available, so if you have people coming, let them know that this committee proceedings are on closed caption there. Please go ahead. MPP Taverns.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate this. Good afternoon. Good to see you all here. I want to say, Mr. Diamond, I'm very pleased to hear you confirming that we're talking about a 12-acre parcel. For a while, there was discussion of a number of other parcels with much larger numbers, but we're talking only about 12 acres. As you're well aware, the report that was prepared by the Auditor General caused a lot of concern in a number of areas, but for us in particular with regard to Sidewalk Labs. And so I have some questions that flow from her comments on page 690 about the process with the Investment and Real Estate Committee. Could you confirm, I'll just read the question, and you can respond. Please confirm that Julie Di Lorenzo, yourself, Mr. Diamond, and Susie Henderson were the board member experts in real estate development, financing, and evaluating complex legal agreements that made up the Investment and Real Estate Committee, IREC, in 2017, and that Julie Di Lorenzo was the Chair of this committee? Can you confirm that statement?
Yes.
Okay. Can you confirm that the IREC meeting on October 13th, 2017, was held by phone?
That is correct.
And are there minutes of this meeting that can be made available to this committee?
That I'm not aware of. You'd have to ask staff. I don't know that.
Is there a staff person here who can answer that question?
Can you please identify yourself for the committee? Thank you.
Hi. Meg Davis, Waterfront Toronto, Chief Development Officer. Yes, in fact, that meeting was held by phone. There may be notes kept by our legal counsel. We didn't prepare formal minutes at that meeting.
So can you make a commitment on the part of Waterfront Toronto to provide this committee with copies of those notes?
Yes, if we have them, I will absolutely provide those as soon as possible.
Okay.
Is that the end of that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zagarek, if you can come back. Thank you.
Mr. Diamond, can you confirm that the REC, the IREC, could not come to a consensus on recommending the framework agreement?
No, I disagree with that. I think that there was, except for Mr. Lorenzo's concern, the rest of the IREC committee was more than satisfied moving forward with the framework agreement. I personally was satisfied with the framework agreement. There was a meeting in my office in September 19th, 2017, where a summary was presented with staff and other members of the IREC committee. At that meeting, there was actually three separate issues that I raised that I wanted to be a part of this, which was then subsequently moved at a meeting where people were present on October 12th. Those three issues, actually, that I was personally concerned about was that any agreement that we entered into, that Waterfront Toronto would have the right at any time to unilaterally terminate that agreement, that there was a proposal from Sidewalk Labs to fund approximately $50 million in terms of innovation and other matters, and I also moved a motion that in any agreement we would sign, that the corporation would not accept any funds from Sidewalk Labs until actually we had the second-stage agreement, which was known as the Plan Development Agreement, signed. And finally, I asked for language to ensure, with respect to any language going out to the 12 acres, that we were not bound to do anything but the 12 acres. So I was personally satisfied at that time that the framework agreement was perfectly appropriate.
You may have been.
Yes.
But what the auditor reports is that there was not a consensus on the part of the committee, and there was not a recommendation to the board. Was there a consensus?
In my view, well, it depends. There were three members of the committee. I believe that two of the three members were satisfied, and one member was not satisfied. So with the one member not being satisfied, we thought it was best to approach the board with an indication that two of the members were satisfied but what wasn't, and to bring the matter to the attention of the board.
And did you make that recommendation to the board in writing?
Which recommendation?
Sorry. Did you report to the board that two of the three supported it?
Yes.
And did you do that in writing?
I believe that was done in writing.
Could we have a copy of that?
I'm sure you can. Sure.
Was the board surprised that there was a lack of unanimity on this?
I'm trying to go back. I don't know whether they were surprised or not surprised. I think it'd been subject to some ongoing discussion. It was a very interesting and novel project that we were considering. So I'm not sure that that's the case. I think, as I recall, in the end of the day, that the board ended up voting to move forward. So I don't think it was that big a surprise.
Okay. Going to the next section about the presentation of the framework agreement to the board. The board received the agreement on October 13th, framework agreement, and the agreement was approved by the board on October 16th. So I think the 13th was a Friday, the 16th was a Monday, had effectively one working day. At what time on Friday, October 13th, 2017, was the Waterfront Toronto Board provided with a copy of the actual framework agreement?
That information I wouldn't have. You'd have to get that from staff.
Is there a staff person who can speak to that?
I'm going to call Meg Davis to come to answer that question if she can.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Thank you. So your question was, at what time on the 16th was the board provided—
Sorry. At what time on Friday, October 13th, 2017, was the board given the copy of the actual framework agreement to review in advance of the decision-making meeting to come?
I don't know the time, but we'll look at it. We can find the email where we transmitted that, or it was put up on our board effects. So we'll get that time for you. The one thing I would say is that, like I think most of you work, IREC was delegated the authority to look after the framework agreement. So while the board had a shorter period of time to review, it's sort of like saying a third reading was new to the board when committee had been working on it for a number of months. So I think the committee, as Steve mentioned, was quite comfortable with the exception of one member and did take that to the board with support.
Fair enough. I don't know if this question goes to you, so perhaps I'll go to Mr. Diamond, and he may want to refer it again. Do you believe that providing the board with one Business Day notice of a decision on a very complex framework agreement, including questions of data governance, something that I don't think Waterfront Toronto has a long history with, do you think one day is adequate before asking the board to approve the agreement?
Well, I can't speak for the other board members. I can only speak for myself in terms of my experience and my knowledge of the agreement at the time. And because I had been extensively involved with the matter up to that point in time, I certainly was more than satisfied with the agreement and the proposal. I think the other thing to keep in mind here with respect to that framework agreement is it subsequently really became, whatever happened at the time, became subsequent irrelevant because it was totally replaced with a second agreement called— because it was totally replaced with a second agreement called the Plan Development Agreement. And that is the agreement that subsequently governed our total relationship between us and Sidewalk Labs. So whatever happened there subsequently really became totally irrelevant from one way or the other. You know, what I do think was unfortunate at the time was, in fairness, I think the board was asked three or four days earlier than a scheduled board meeting to accommodate an announcement that was to be made because the Prime Minister was coming into town. So looking back, probably that wasn't the wisest move to have made at the time.
If I can just add a piece of information—
Yes, if you wouldn't mind, yes, go ahead.
On October 11 and 12, we also held two briefings with the board on the framework agreement. So while the final copy had been given to them on the Friday before, they actually had been briefed fully on the agreement, which, as Mr. Diamond has said, had a unilateral right for Waterfront Toronto to terminate at any time prior to signing the Plan Development Agreement.
Well, before you leave, my understanding from reviewing the report by our Auditor General was that those briefings were very high-level, that in fact, this is a very substantial agreement that was brought before the board. And the board's ability to reach out, talk to legal experts or other experts would have been extraordinarily limited between the time they got the final package and the time they had to make a decision. So they may have had a briefing, but I've had a variety of briefings in my time as a politician, some being more thorough than others.
Absolutely.
The sense we have from the briefing that was given was that it was very high-level, not in-depth.
The briefing that we gave focused on all of the risks and the mitigations that we identified with the IREC committee that were raised over the course of, since probably late August, early September, and the number of things that Mr. Diamond's raised to have us change in the agreement. So all of those things, those risks and mitigation measures were raised with the board at that briefing. I don't know if you want to comment on—
No, and I would like to go back to Mr. Diamond because you said that you were satisfied, but you also said that the amount of time that was provided, in retrospect, was not necessarily the optimum or the best amount of time.
It wasn't that the, I think the problem with the situation was the optics of the situation, not necessarily the meetings and the time taken, as there were the briefing meetings. I think the optics of the potential perception that approval to a framework agreement was made to accommodate the Prime Minister's schedule coming into town at the time, I think, was unfortunate, and looking back was likely not the smartest or wisest move to be made. And I think that we learned from those things moving forward. So I candidly have to say, if I could go back in time, I wasn't Chair of the Board at the time, I was a member of the IREC committee, but looking back, I would have not scheduled, the meeting was, I think, scheduled for three or four days later, and that should have been the course, it should have been followed at that point in time, rather than trying to move the meeting up to accommodate that. I have to be candid, that's my view. I think that would have been a healthier optical process, and if there were any concerns, they could have been addressed. So that's my perspective on it.
If I can just add, since that time and since the Auditor General's report, we have put into place a number of processes and protocols, not only with our board, to make sure that they are completely up to speed on all of the activities on Keyside, but also our government partners. We have a protocol in place now where we get comment from government before we go to the board with any requests for approvals. And we've been working very, very closely with our government partners, having regular meetings all the way through since that time, so that they are also up to speed.
So just to summarize again, I think it's recognized that one working day's time for the board to review this was not good practice. You don't see it as good practice?
I think we've said that if we had it to do over again, as I said at the committee in Ottawa, I think the second agreement, the PDA, was the first, should have been the first agreement. We should have taken the time to negotiate that proper agreement. The framework agreement was more like a letter of intent so that we could make an announcement. I think what we should have done was just negotiate the Plan Development Agreement, which was approved later unanimously by the board.
Going back then to Mr. Diamond, other than the fact that there was an announcement scheduled for the 17th, the day after the board made its decision, was there any other reason to require board approval of that framework agreement on only one business-day notice? Was this entirely dictated by the desire to have an announcement on the 17th?
That was my understanding at the time, yes.
Sorry, that was your understanding at the time. Who made the decision? Were you informed that there was just going to be one business-day notice and then the announcement? Who made the decision, then, that would only be one day?
Well, I don't have detailed notes, but I just remember receiving a call from, I believe it was the then-current Chair, suggesting that there was a visit coming from, to be quite candid, from the Prime Minister, that all matters were in order, and could we move up the board meeting five, few days to consider the approval of the framework agreement?
And who was the Chair at the time?
I think it was Helen Burston was the Chair at the time.
All right. Going on to my next question. According to the Plan Development Agreement, Sidewalk Lab will cover costs of developing the MIDP up to $50 million, $50 million US dollars, including costs incurred by Waterfront Toronto up to 4.47 million, and this is from the Auditor General's report. Do you consider it good governance for Waterfront Toronto to accept funds from a vendor, in this case, almost $5 million, to assist in development of a plan which, in turn, Waterfront Toronto will have to evaluate? So effectively, you're writing a plan, and you have the responsibility for evaluation. Strikes me that it can be difficult to reconcile those two roles, one being a provider of a plan and one being a critic and an assessor of a plan. Mr. Diamond, how do you feel about that?
First of all, I'd like to just explain that a little further to allow Ms. Davis to discuss that, and then I'll give my comment.
Fine, Ms. Davis.
So let me, I think there's a two-part question there. So let me start with the, I think it was 5.8 million Canadian,
Okay.
if you do the conversion, that Sidewalk pledged to pay for Waterfront Toronto, mostly for our staff time and some of our consulting time, over the very early stages of the project. And, you know, at the time, governments, and through our mandate, governments have urged Waterfront Toronto to bring in private sector investment and not rely always on government funds. We owned Keyside and felt there was an opportunity to do something different here and try to sort of take the next revolutionary step in sustainability and some of those urban challenges like mobility and affordability. So we looked at Keyside a little bit differently, and we wanted to bring on a thought leader, somebody who could help us with those urban challenges. But we didn't want to take that sort of test and that risk on the taxpayers' tab. So we said to all the bidders, there would be a requirement to pay for our staff. So it didn't really matter if it was Sidewalk or anyone else. Whatever bidder was selected, they would have had to help pay for our staff time. The other thing that Steve made clear was that we didn't take any money from Sidewalk Labs until after we had the Plan Development Agreement. And in the Plan Development Agreement, things shift a little bit. We got a lot of feedback, like the comment that you just made about creating and then evaluating. And we really took that opportunity to sort of, we'd finished the ideation stage of the project, and we moved on to Sidewalk creating the MIDP, and Waterfront Toronto creating the evaluation framework that we're using now to do those evaluations. So not that we went our separate ways, but we divided the work that was being done, and we were not creating the MIDP. And in fact, as you saw on the 24th of June, the MIDP is a Sidewalk document. It's their plan, it's their proposal, and Waterfront Toronto developed a very robust evaluation framework with KPMG as our subject matter expert to evaluate that MIDP, which we're doing right now.
So in fact, all the money that was provided was for evaluation and not development of the plan? Is that correct?
No, the money that was provided to Waterfront Toronto was to establish, we had to hire some staff, it was to establish our own internal team, it was to hire some subject matter experts to help us come up with some of the early ideas and get through the Plan Development Agreement. Once we were through that, we were separated, the money had been spent, and that money was used during a period of time where we had a unilateral right through the framework agreement to walk away at any time up until we signed the Plan Development Agreement. And then Sidewalk paid us for the time up until that time. We didn't receive any money until after the PDA was signed, but they paid retrospectively. And then from there, going forward, we were on our own dime. And this isn't actually uncommon. Municipalities—
I just want to let the people know that it's two minutes left in this question.
Municipalities will often ask their development partner, particularly smaller municipalities, but I know City of Toronto does it as well, where developers will pay for extra resources to help review plans, big projects, that sort of thing. So it's not really uncommon for an approver, so to speak, to receive funding for extra staff and that sort of thing to review projects like this.
Mr. Diamond?
Well, I would just, just to use the same example, there are many times when, in the development industry, where a municipality will come and say, you know, would you pay for certain issues, staff time, to get the move the process going? And we've done that, and I don't think it's ever created a situation of conflict. In fact, when I look at the whole development process and the use of the Section 37 agreements that we use, at the end of the day, they're negotiating a huge amount of public benefits and money coming to the city in exchange for certain things coming forward. I mean, you could argue, the whole situation's full of conflict. So that part of it, I really think, is not significant. I think it's very important, in pursuing something of this nature in any creative entity, that, you know, the use of public funds is very important, and, you know, four and a half or five and a half million dollars of public money is something that if we can save, I think it's incumbent on us to do that, as long as it doesn't hurt the process. And I don't think in any way it hurt the process. I've been involved in the last year, and as you said at the beginning, we're back to the 12-acre site, and I can tell you, there were pretty rough meetings between us and Sidewalk over the last year, and I think this part of the process was totally insignificant. And if we save some public money, I think that that's very, very important.
Okay, so there's five seconds left. So we're going to move to the government side. MPP Gamari.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for your presentation. It was very informative and helpful. Just have a couple of questions, sort of more in general, and this is more directed towards Ministry of Infrastructure. So, you know, we have a number of recommendations provided by the Auditor General, and, you know, there's sort of an update on the undertakings, excuse me, what has or hasn't sort of been progressed. So I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification with respect to the Auditor General's recommendation, number one, in terms of the reviewing the mandate for Waterfront Toronto. And I just kind of wanted to get an update on what Ontario has done to address the Attorney General's concerns.
Thank you for your question. So let me start off by saying that the governance of Waterfront Toronto is a tripartite. It's between us, the province, the federal government, as well as the city. So we work in unison, and it works by unanimity. So with respect to what we've done to address the mandate issue, first of all, it's in progress, so the work continues to happen. What we're starting to do is the three parties, us, the feds, and the city, the first thing that we're doing is looking at other waterfront-related agencies, looking at their mandates, understanding what their, clarifying what their purpose and role is, and that will feed into, at the end of the day, an overall update of a potential vision for Waterfront Toronto. So for the government, it's looking at its own agencies that have a role in the revitalization of the Waterfront Toronto. The city itself is undertaking a similar exercise. And at the end of the day, the three parties will come together to ensure that there is a clarification of roles and responsibilities to provide focus, to enable Waterfront Toronto to proceed, to proceed forward.
And, thank you. And how does that tie in with sort of the mandate for Ontario Place?
Ontario Place right now is one of the agencies that is currently undertaking a mandate review, and that will, that will be one of the agencies that will inform how we move forward with Waterfront Toronto, clarify the roles and responsibilities for that particular agencies, and feed into ensuring that there isn't any overlap or potential confusion with the mandate of Waterfront Toronto. It's about ensuring that we're synchronizing efforts and focusing them so everybody's rowing in the same direction. But we need to do, we need to do some substantial work to begin with, to clarify these roles and responsibilities, given that these organizations, over time, have taken on different tasks, et cetera. So we totally agree with the Auditor General that it is time for us to do this work and refocus, refocus our efforts.
Thank you. And my next question, sort of, is of personal interest to me as well. You know, I'm almost 35, sort of a millennial, I love technology, and, you know, the idea of smart cities is something that's, you know, intriguing to many people in my generation, and younger and older as well. So my question is, with respect to sort of smart cities, what progress has been made to develop sort of a policy framework that addresses issues concerning these smart cities? Because, you know, this is, this is exciting stuff, but I think also it's something that needs to be done right, with a forward-thinking approach to, you know, accommodate possible new technologies as well, and not create something that, you know, we'll spend a lot of taxpayer money on and potentially be obsolete in five years.
So let me, let me start off by saying that the ministry is responsible for coordinating the overall response amongst 11 different ministries that, whose space we encroach upon in terms of this topic. The most important thing that's going on to this end is the development of Ontario's data strategy, which will be the key with respect to promoting and informing the protection of people's privacy. Last, may the provincial government announce the results of its public consultation on data strategy, and the strategy will prioritize three key areas. The first one being promoting public trust and confidence, creating economic benefits, and enabling smarter and efficient government. As part of that, the government released its province's five principles that will require smart cities to do the following, and this is how we propose to ensure that we guide and inform some of the activities undertaken by Waterfront Toronto. The first one is, first principle, that is, is guarantee that Ontario's privacy and personal data are protected, put people first by ensuring that Ontarians are the primary beneficiaries of the opportunities created by the project, create responsible and good governance systems, enact leading best technical practices that ensure chosen technologies, use open software and open standard, and educate the public on risks associated with the project, and provide meaningful opportunities for local residents to engage in the creation of a smart city. The release of these principles was the first step in creating a policy framework to divide the development, to guide, excuse me, the development of smart cities in Ontario. Further to this, the government has established advisory panels on data issues, including the data, the digital and data task force, and the intellectual property panel to provide expert advice to governor topics that are relevant to the issue related to the development of smart issues. The panelists on these are experts in their field, and it's part of the coordination activity to ensure that we bring evidence and expert evidence to bear on creating this overall provincial policy.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. I have MPP Miller, followed by MPP Parsa, and then Hogarth. And we'll try to, there's still, there's still 13 minutes left in the session.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your presentation. I guess I'll begin by kind of following up on recommendation one about the complicated structure and the overlapping responsibility as well. Mr. Diamond, you seem pretty optimistic and positive in your opening statement, and that's encouraging. As I read the auditor's report, I must admit that I looked at it, thought, you know, how do you make anything work when you have three levels of government and all these various organizations that are all sort of, have a finger in the pie? So, and I think in our report, you also talked about, gave the example of Winnipeg, where it seemed to be a simpler structure, and they just formed a corporation, and the corporation owned all the lands, and they had great success. So my question is, with the structure, the reality of what we do have, Mr. Diamond, do you believe that you can fulfill your, what you achieve your objectives and see the sort of development of the waterfront? Or does there need to be, does the whole thing need to be blown up and changed?
Well, let me just say that, first of all, I think the Auditor General raised a very important point, it was one of her first and key recommendations, and it's one that, having been in the role, I'm very sympathetic to, because I do believe that overall, the corporation would likely be even more effective if it had more control and could ensure that its recommendations were implemented. So that would be an ideal situation. You know, having said that, I think we've demonstrated through the last year and throughout its— its history that it's been able to achieve a lot of positive direction. So, I don't think it's something that, you know, in the last words, needs to be blown up. If it was the will of the government to make some adjustments to allow the corporation to have more control as Chair of the Board and for future Chairs of the Board and the administration, I think it would definitely facilitate it and make for somewhat better outcomes. Having said that, I am optimistic that within the operation, that we can achieve success that's been demonstrated in the past.
And the auditor's made all kinds of recommendations with regard to, you know, keeping records better, projects and-
Yeah.
And I see a recommendation too with regard to deliver future projects such as flood protection of the portlands on time and on budget. In accordance with the plan scope, we recommend that Waterfront Toronto consistently develop detailed project plans and cost estimates based on engineering and technical studies. So, I'm going to ask about whether you are, what the status of that is, particularly the flood work is in progress right now.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to ask a couple of questions on that. First of all, are you confident, based on the writing, I represent Perry-Salmoskoga, it's significant flooding, we're seeing the Great Lakes at record levels, including Georgia Bay where I live, is that record-
I have a cottage there, and I can tell you the water levels are killing my property.
Yeah, so, I'll talk to you about that after. So, and I notice with the plan, there seems to be, well, first of all, I read the flood advisors' report last week that was provided to the government, and, I mean, this is in a flood plain or it's pretty close to the water level. Are you confident and have you done studies that the work you're doing will protect the area from future higher-
Yeah, I'll hand a little more of that technical question over to George. But, basically, I mean, we just, I've had actually a couple of briefings, it's been something that's very important. I think it's actually one of the most significant projects, I mean, more significant in many ways than Keyside of what we're doing there, because it's not only flood-proofing that area and allowing additional lands for development, but it's flood-proofing for the whole downtown. And I've been satisfied that what we're doing is going to ensure that that will be the case with respect to the expenditures, and that it is basically proceeding, for the most part, on time and on budget. I mean, the other, the other point I would just make about budgeting generally is, you know, I am in the development business, and I can tell you, in the last five years, there's just, in the private sector, there's probably been more projects that have come in over budget than on budget. There's been really a lot of unexpected increases in costs that have taken everybody by surprise. So, when I see the work actually and the steps that have been taken since the Auditor General's reports come out and what Waterfront is doing, personally, I'm very satisfied with the approaches they're taking towards those very significant issues.
So, and on the recommendation with regard to the developed detailed project plans and cost estimates for the engineering that is-
That's underway, and I just let George handle that.
Okay, that's, I'll pass it on to my colleague.
Yeah, if I can just answer that in a little more detail. So, we have project plans for each component, and we have risk assessments done. We went through a whole environmental assessment process to get approval of the levels of government who had responsibility to ensure for a major flood situation that we have covered that off. So, that part is covered, just in terms of progress.
Sorry to interrupt, but how long did that process take? Because I was wondering whether, I went reading the detail, changing river, where the river goes and things like that.
Right. So, on that one, maybe I'll just ask my project manager, the head of this project, David Costurne, to come up in a moment. But, I'll just give you the quick status of where we're at on it, and then I'll get him to answer those questions. So, great progress to date. We actually have the lake filling to create a new habitat in the parkland is actually completed already. We've excavated the new river valley system, and it's well underway with regards to diversion of the water for the future. And the realignment of the Cherry Street and construction of Cherry Street Bridge to connect to the new Villiers Island is well underway as well. So, I'll get David to talk about the process. And as I said before, we also have a third party who reviews all of our work to challenge and to report to our farm committee, which is our financial audit and risk committee. And they've felt that we've, in fact, they do 6,000 simulations to look at the probability of us finishing on time, on budget, and addressing the issue that you've raised. But, if I could just ask David Costurne to answer the question on the environmental assessment process.
Sure. Thanks. Cheers. My name is David Costurne. I'm the chief project officer for Waterfront Toronto. The environmental assessment that was undertaken for the Donmouth Flood Protection Project was undertaken in partnership with TRCA, the Toronto Region Conservation Authority in the City of Toronto and Waterfront Toronto. It took two years. It started in 2005 and was completed in 2015. The environmental assessment was approved by the Ministry of Environment and all stakeholders, and that is the work that we are now implementing. There was a subsequent due diligence study undertaken in 2015 and 16 to better define the scope, cost, and schedule for the project. And based on that due diligence, governments, all three governments approved the funding for the project. Thank you.
I'll pass it over to my colleague.
And PPP Parsa?
What time do we have, Madam Chair?
There is just over five, five minutes.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. I want to thank you all once again for being here. Really appreciate it. One of my colleagues last week pointed out the fact that you're in the hot seat when you come here, so we really appreciate you being candid and open. Thank you for that. I just want to read a line of the Auditor General, it talks about the mandate of the waterfront. It says, "This mandate is to enhance economic, social, and cultural value of the waterfront area and to create an accessible and active waterfront for living, working, and recreation." My question would be in around the economic developments and social benefits of Keyside in particular. So, I just want to know what the, about the provincial initiatives around the tourism strategy, forestry strategy, and provincial policy, and perhaps maybe even the deputy can chime in as well.
Yeah. So, we've been working very closely with the provincial, federal governments, and the city around the economic development. As we saw when we did the design work for Corktown Common, which was a similar project to the portlands that reduced the flood risk at that part of the river, it opened up to huge opportunities for economic development, both on the west onlands and east bayside. So, we've lived through the opportunity to generate great economic opportunity, not only in terms of development, but we had a lot of affordable housing and public realm that was built in that property. We're trying to do exactly the same thing as we develop further down towards the lake, and we create the opportunities for both the economic development, participation, activation, tourism. And that's all part of the objectives we put forward in the RFP, is to activate that community, to look at opportunities for further economic development. Maybe I'll let Chris talk about the tall timber strategy, which would help our timber industry and in particular the north, and our indigenous communities as well, who could participate in that economic activity. So, I think there's been a lot of work that's been done, and that's what we're evaluating right now with regards to the 12 acres, what can we do to maximize that opportunity? But, I'll turn it over to my colleague, the Deputy Minister.
Thank you, George. I think it's important to note that just the flood, the Portland Flood Protection Project alone will protect 290 acres, that's 715 acres, against flooding, and this will effectively unlock the area's potential for future residential and commercial development. That is, that is a substantial amount of development potential that will be unlocked by a, an ambitious flood protection program that's both complicated in its engineering and in its implementation. So, I think it's important to note the potential, the economic development potential that this does unlock. It's a, it's a significant amount of money in terms of the three levels of government, $1.25 billion. And the return on investment as a result of the economic development and social development will be substantial in that respect. In addition to that, the, for example, the province's forestry strategy that speaks to the use, that enhances economic development opportunity-
There's two minutes left in this question set.
By being able to promote things like the use of tall timber in construction and innovative technology will, in and of itself, create not only economic development potentials within the waterfront development, but also for the forestry sector as a whole, and it'll benefit communities and industries in the north as a result of this. That's just one area. The technological, the potential for technological advances, the use of, for example, autonomous vehicles in the, in the area allows for the, for the future proofing to a certain extent, and the use of these types of technologies to create a 22nd century community. With all that that entails with respect to improving the quality of lives of not just the people living within Waterfront Toronto, but within the province as a whole, because there'll be lessons learned there that could potentially be applied to other cities within the province.
Thank you, Debbie. If you don't mind, after this, when I come back, I'm going to go back to and ask you a couple of specific questions, in case I don't get my chance, I have to ask you this. Value for money, it's very important to our government, we want to make sure that taxpayers' hard-earned dollars are spent wisely. This project itself, is it good value for taxpayers?
I think at the, at the end of the day, I mean, time will tell, but obviously, we believe it's good value for money, and we believe that we have in place the appropriate oversight to ensure that we get value for money between ourselves, ourselves being the three levels of government, and Waterfront Toronto. I'd like to stress-
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I can come back to you, and then it would be MPP Hogarth. MPP Birch?
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. I have a few questions around scope and public consultation. And just like to start with, the Auditor General points to a second agreement with Sidewalk Labs, the plan development agreement that was signed in July 2018, which replaces the initial framework agreement and potentially opens the door to expand the Sidewalk Labs project to approximately 600 acres of land in the portlands. And lands Waterfront Toronto does not have the authority to grant land rights to. And am I correct in assuming that the request for proposal for Keyside did not contain any mention of developing the 20-acre site on Villiers Island?
In the, sorry, are you asking in the RFP? Is that your question to the RFP?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, I, that I-
I'm going to ask Meg- Davis to come up, who's involved at the time, to answer that question.
Maybe Meg should do.
Thank you. The RFP spoke specifically about the 12 acres of Keyside as a testbed opportunity, but offered an opportunity for proponents to think at scale and what things might be tested or created on Keyside that could then be expanded beyond Keyside, whether it would be in a broader waterfront project or maybe somewhere else in the world. So, they were allowed to think at scale, but the only commitment from Waterfront Toronto was to work with someone to potentially implement, not guaranteed to implement, but potentially implement, a testbed project on the 12 acres of Keyside. But, as you can see, we've made it clear in the realignment that we have through the October 31st threshold issues that were approved by the board, that we're focusing only on the 12 acres. So, while the RFP did talk about the designated waterfront area, because that's sort of the planning context, and you need to know where's transit coming from, where's sewers coming from, that sort of thing, it did not say anything about specifically 20 acres on Villiers Island. It was really just to be thinking at scale.
Okay. So, what I'm wondering is, Sidewalk Labs included an extra 20-acre site in its proposed master innovation and development plan. So, is it a good or fair procurement practice for a corporation like Waterfront Toronto to conduct a public consultation on lands that were not covered in the RFP?
So, the public consultation that happened prior to October 31st, well, sorry, prior to the release of the MIDP, I should say, those were related to ideas. I don't think there was something specific to the 20 acres. I know that in their MIDP, they talk about putting the Google headquarters on the Villiers Island area, along with the Urban Innovation Institute that they were proposing, and that through the negotiation of the threshold issues, we said you need to come back to the 12 acres and focus on those first. And the city provided a letter shortly before that, I think on October the 21st, the city provided a letter making it very clear that any lands beyond Keyside, which Waterfront Toronto has no right to transact on, they're owned by the city mostly, I think Ports Toronto owns some of those lands, that those would have to go through a proper procurement process in order for anyone to have use of those lands that wasn't the city.
But, I do understand that Sidewalk Labs did include an extra 20-acre site in the proposed master innovation and development plan?
I don't know if this, how I can press this down, but actually, they included, I think it was a total of an additional 190 acres in their MIDP, not just 20 acres. So, so what happened was, going back, what I was trying to address in my preliminary comments, I had just become Chair in, I think it was in March, and the MIDP came in without the approval of the Waterfront Corporation, and they did include that 190 acres, and that's when I wrote my open letter to the public indicating serious concerns over their interpretation of what they should be entitled to and what they thought was in the, in the public interest, and setting the stage for further public consultation and discussion, which then ended up with, after hearing from the public, the corporation setting the October 31st deadline to come back to what we felt was appropriate, dealing with the 12 acres, period, end of story. So, that was what happened.
So, has the plan development agreement been amended to contractually limit Sidewalk to the 12-acre site?
Yes, yes, that's what-
It is in the process of being, yes.
It's in the process, but it's not-
It was agreed to in the threshold issues, and we're in the process of doing it right now.
There is legal documentation between us and Sidewalk Labs acknowledging these threshold issues that has been to the satisfaction of our legal counsel to set the stage for further agreements. But, again, those further agreements won't occur if the project doesn't go forward, because as I said earlier, we still haven't been satisfied that on the 12 acres, that we've seen enough yet in terms of the additional review to go forward.